I'd like to call the May 21 Fridley School Board meeting to order. And if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Dr. Heil, could you introduce us to our spotlight and recognition for the month?
Yes, thank you. Good evening Vice Chair Devo and school board members. I am proud to announce our May 2019 Employee of the Month, and that is Ronnie Soules. Ronnie demonstrates caring for students and staff through all that she does. She takes on tasks willingly, often without even being asked. She helps each student who enters the library, giving her full attention. She is equally attentive to the needs of the staff, fulfilling requests as quickly as possible, which is usually far before the staff member expects it to be done. Ronnie frequently contributes to fundraising efforts and staff events. Her efficiency and intuitiveness for library tasks allows me to devote my energy to lesson planning and working with students at Amy Rousher, the media specialist. Her generosity of spirit is demonstrated in every interaction. So congratulations, and that comes from John Pyatraski, Principal of Hayes Elementary, for Ronnie Soules.
Thank you. It's always fun to hear who will be nominated each month, to be able to celebrate them. Now if you could share with us, Dr. Heil, the public schools retirees for 2018-19.
Yes, thank you. It is with extreme pleasure that we are able to recognize this evening our nine retirees for the 2018-19 school year. So congratulations to Toni Kraft, retiring as the Director of Community Education, Sue Coberson, who was Administrative Assistant to the High School Principal, Michael Hansen, District-wide Special Education Teacher, Gary Lind, Fridley Middle School Teacher, Mary Mueller, Director of Nutritional Services, Amina Oftedal, Director of Education Services, Lucille Paulson, who is the cook at Stevenson Elementary, Renee Phillips, teacher at Hayes Elementary, and Frances Ringwelski, Maintenance Tech at Fridley Middle School. So this outstanding group totals over 159 years of service, and we thank them so much for giving their time to Fridley Public Schools.
Wow. They will be missed as each retiree class is that we review each May. So we just want to thank them in advance for all the work and contribution and commitment they have given to our school district over, how many years was that?
159.
159 years collectively. That's pretty impressive. So we wish them well in the next phase of their journey. Now I would like to invite Stephen Keeler, the Fridley Community Education Director, to share a presentation with us about Fridley Community Center.
Board Vice Chair Devo, board members, and Superintendent Heil, thank you for having me here tonight. We do have some young learners with us here tonight, so I'll try to get to that point quick because it's better to hear me talk, or them talk than me, so... But I'll go through here. So, right off the bat here, I just wanted to say, usually on this slide, we put Fridley Community Education and then the year, but I just wanted to highlight something really important about our building as we transform. We've taken in enrollment center and transportation, and then also just are expanding preschool. So it's not just about what community education is doing, it's about what we're doing and connecting throughout all of our program areas. So it's really, this is a community center update because senior programs, all the things that we do that you'll see, this is, it's not just about one department, it's about what we're doing as a district. So that's an intentional piece there for us.
Thank you for pointing out that distinction, and it's an important one when you look at the work that's being done there, which you're going to tell us all about.
So this is just a quick look at our lead staff at the community center. I'll note the staffing changes a little bit later, but this is just a quick look at some of our lead staff at the community center. Alright, there we go. Alright, so first highlight, I want to highlight just our, a quick Snapchat at our early childhood programs, starting with early childhood family education. We have, these are high-demand programs for us. We are usually full with a waiting list for each of these areas. We do a fall session and a spring session for these. Next year, Dr. Anderson, Dr. Val Anderson, our ECFE Coordinator, is moving to three, a trimester model there, so we can just try to get more families in. And this is just a really big growing edge for us. We also have a very active Advisory Council. And then also a highlight here is we're going to be adding in, we do a separate ECFE Advisory Council and then a preschool Advisory Council that's starting up, but as of 1920 school year, we're going to combine those two because we're really trying to create that connection across the program areas. And a lot of these parents and kids are doing both of these things at the same time, so it makes sense to have those together. Another thing that we're really proud of is also our early childhood screening. We were happy to be able to add a position this year, a .5 FTE position, where it's, that person is solely dedicated to early childhood screenings because we really do see the need in the community for that. And that's also a position that we're able, going to be able to continue in years past. So we really want to bump up our screening capacity in our organization. Another part of our organization, three-year-old preschool, this is our, this is about pay on a sliding fee scale model. We have 60 students. This year, we did a two-day, three-day, and five-day per week options. Next year, we are shifting to one three-day afternoon section and then two five-days. And this is just based on the data that we received. The need and the request were for more five-day, and then the three-day has always been popular for us. So that's kind of the model that we're moving, based on requests from families that we were receiving, so. Our four-year-old preschool, this is our no-cost-to-families options, which also includes transportation for our in-district residents as well as our Northwest Suburban Integration District students. This year, we're graduating 140 students to kindergarten. 124 of those students that are also currently enrolled in kindergarten at Hazer Stevenson. This represents 88% retention of the students. So this is a number that we like to highlight here just because we are seeing that we are keeping the students with us as we move up through the years. And that's really going to be a good data collection point for us. I always move forward to see where, at the end of their careers, how much have we retained from the four-year-old all the way up? So this is something that we're going to be tracking very closely. We have 131 students currently registered, and this is, or currently with registration in, we still have to send out letters to families for the 1920 school year. And we will have a full 140 slots as well for this next year. We did switch, we did a time switch for our next year. We were an hour later than this, so 9:00, we did 9:30 to 12:30, and then 1:30 to 4:30. This shift is based on a couple of different factors. A lot of it has to do with busing, and the key factor on busing is that when you send kids home at 4:30 on a bus, four-year-olds, mind you, that, especially in the winter months, they're getting home at a, it's dark. It's, so it's just, it was a big safety consideration for us to make this shift back to that 3:15 time. And it works, it'll work better for our families as well. And then, we also are a PYP candidate school, and we're moving towards full authorization in the 2021 school year. And this is really exciting for us because, as you know, we're a IB Continuum District, and having that at our preschool, three- and four-year-old level as well is really just, we're really excited about that, to be able to have that continuum across the board here in Fridley. So it's exciting. The other thing that we're really proud of is our four-year-old wraparound preschool model with Tiger Club, in partnership with Tiger Club Child Care. You see that $150 per week price tag is really unheard of if you look in the metro area as far as what your cost for care is. We're really proud of that cost, and we're intentionally keeping that low so it's affordable for our families. We have 40 students currently enrolled, and we're looking at similar numbers for 1920. This is just a fantastic option because not only is it a low price, but we can also match that up with scholarships for families that need. And then we, so we have, out of that 40, I would say about 15 students are receiving scholarships this year. So this, it's just a big value add for our families. So we're excited for that to continue to grow. The one thing that we're looking at is just staffing is hard in many childcare settings, so how do we staff to the level of the need is what we're really looking at there.
So Stephen, if I could interrupt. So what that means is that they do their half-day preschool, and then they go right into Tiger Club or Tiger Care?
Right, and there's some variation there too. They can come as early as, say if they start at 8:15, they can come to our programming as early as 6:30, and we'll just make sure the transition is smooth. So we do have some kids that start with us at 6:30, and based on parents' work schedule, leave at about 5:30. So that's, it's just a wonderful service to offer that all in one building. So that's, we're really excited about that. But now the part that we're excited about, we're going to have our youngest learners come up and join us here. We'll ask them a few questions about their experience. So just a little introduction. So Madeline and Mackenzie are, the reason why they're here is because they are in four-year-old preschool, and they're also in Tiger Club Wraparound Care, so they represent a family that is doing all the models for us. So I'll just ask you a couple of questions. So both of you can answer if you want. What is your favorite thing to do in preschool? Art, did you say? Art. What's your favorite thing to do in preschool? Playing with your friend?
Have him come closer.
Oh, can you come a little closer here?
We want to hear you, Ronnie.
So playing with your friends is one of your favorite things to do in preschool? That's so cool. And then, what is your favorite thing to do when you're with your friends in Tiger Club? You like to play with your friends too? Sina? Your good friend? And then what, what do you most, so you're graduating soon, aren't you? What is your, are you excited about kindergarten? What's your most exciting thing about kindergarten coming up? You're going to learn about math? Math? You like math too? And if you, if you can't tell, Madeline and Mackenzie are twins. Thank you so much for answering some questions for us. That was so nice of you. Thank you.
You did a good job. You'll have to come back and see us when you're in high school.
Right, we'll have you back. And I'm going to, also, Brigida Anderson is their mother, but she also wanted to have her share a few words with us because, very unique, she's, kind of checks a lot of boxes, right? So she's a parent in the district, she works in our early childhood family education program, and then her other part of her day is also in community education, or, sorry, in the preschool program. So she works in both worlds for us. And then also, she'll be working for us in Tiger Club during our summer program as well. So she is, she kind of represents like what we're trying to do with the cohesiveness and connection throughout the building. So I just wanted to ask her a few questions about that as well. So, as a parent and an employee, how do you see consistency and coherence at work at Fridley Community Center?
And I have notes because I'm not good on the spot. So I see consistency with both programs. They're aware of the following safety procedures that we have put in place with the doors, and the programs strive to maintain a clean and safe workplace. As a CE, I see coherency with information on students that attend both programs. So, you know, if there is an incident, health, you know, health issues or just attendance-wise, there's communication between the staffs if they attend both programs. As a parent, I am informed by both programs on how my children are doing during its day. I feel heard and respect. I love that about both programs, allow my children to acknowledge me while I'm at work. So, and even the other kids in the care, because I interact with so many. So I get lots of hugs and high-fives, and I love that they allow me to have that in the building, so.
And as a parent, how do you see your child supported in their learning at preschool and in Tiger Club?
Well, this being my first year having my kids ever in daycare. I ran a daycare for eight years myself, and in-home. And I see my kids still continuing to be respectful and caring. They love learning through music and art, and both programs have allowed them to be creative and express themselves, as they have came home talking about and singing songs that they've learned in both programs.
And then, how do you see our community being supported through our early childhood family education programs?
Alright, this is my big one, so. Am I on the wrong page? Here we go. Okay, working for ECFE is actually my favorite part of the day, you know, of all the programs that I work with. I love meeting new families, as well as personally supporting parents through their struggles, showing them techniques on how to communicate with their children, showing them ways to talk, as well as giving positive reinforcement. Also, as a parent, letting them know that they're not alone. I mean, we all have those moments where just like, oh my gosh. So, you know, just having that support itself. I love talking to them about like free ways to, like around our community. You know, the parks that I've visited, or the library has storytime, and there's just a lot of things that I've used because as a family of five, you know, or five kids, you know, I'm always looking for something that we can do that doesn't cost a lot of money. And then, I've seen a huge difference in the children itself. From separation anxiety in the beginning till the first day to the last day, it's amazing the steps and leaps and bounds these kids have made, and their parents even. You can see they come in and they're almost like, seem like they're exhausted, and by the end, they're smiling. They've built relationships with other parents, and other, their children have learned how to interact with other children, as well as how to share. So I would honestly, you know, think that it's, I love ECFE. I think it's great. And I never was in ECFE myself, like, I did do the community, the creative play when I, like, for one year. And so that was really good for me as a parent because at that time, I would bring a couple of my daycare kids with me, but it allowed me to have communication with other parents, and being home alone with your kids all the time, it's so important to just have a connection with other. So, that's what I guess I got to say.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. And now, as an extension of that, we, during Staff Appreciation Week, we were able to put together a little video just to show our appreciation to some of our teachers, and I did want to show that to you as well tonight.
What's your favorite thing about Ms. Jessica?
I like Christmas, and when her hair is up and when it's down.
What's your favorite thing about Ms. Liz?
I love her.
Uh, Ms. Ashton.
Ms. Ashton, what do you like about Ms. Ashton?
She bees nice to us.
Ms. Liz.
She's nice and fun, and we dance together. And we learn the alphabet.
Who's your teacher?
Ms. Jamie.
I like doing the alphabet, and she teaches me the alphabet. I like that.
Tell me who your teacher is again?
Uh, Ms. Emerald.
Wow, what do you like about Ms. Emerald?
I like to play.
Thank you for reading books for me.
Thank you, Ms. Liz.
That's what I say. Thank you, teacher. I love you.
I'm nice. I'm really nice to my teachers.
So, I have to talk to you still after that cuteness, but...
I know. That's why you become a teacher. Do you have any openings? I want to work there.
I know, right? Some summer openings, yes. Come on over. Just wait for the presentation to come back up here a second here. There it is. Alright, so just moving into our Tiger Club Child Care section. So just by way of introduction, we do have, we go through birth through sixth grade in our programming. More than 200 families, 250 families served in the 2018-2019 school year. We successfully completed our licensing process, and then the biggest new thing for Birth to Five is our preschool wraparound care that I shared with you as well. School Age Care program is fully at FCC. If you remember, in years past, we were at the school sites, elementaries, but now we're fully at FCC, and after our summer construction, there's no more moving for us, so we're really happy about that. And then, reaccreditation for, has also been achieved for our K-6 program. And then, other highlights are our staff evaluation system. We really are moving two-pronged here, professional development and staff evaluation. So we have a quarterly evaluation system, just where we can share consistent feedback with our staff. And then, professional development. Tiger Club in the past hasn't had a lot of opportunities for staff development, so we're aligning our staff development days with the district's staff development days, and also providing weekly professional development options now, starting in the 1920 school year. And Tiger Club is really a model in the district for family engagement because we consistently engage our families, whether it be through Lights On After School, where we extend our hours for families to have an extended break, or we have our family nights where kids do, go from comedy routines to just little one-act pieces, and we share dinner with families. So it's just a really cool way to connect, so. It's a fun program, proud program, but those are some of the highlights there. The other big thing for us is our senior program incorporation. If you remember, back in April of 2018, we officially took over the senior program from the City of Fridley Recreation Department. And proud to say that we're, have all services, clubs and events are running with strong attendance. And we've also, with the addition of the construction, we've been able to add restrooms specifically on the senior side, for senior, to decrease the walking they have to do. Added a drinking fountain specifically on the senior side. And then we did a big technology upgrades, which this room is of benefit to that. And actually, $10,000 of how we paid for that came from the Friends of the Fridley Senior Program Foundation, so we're very grateful for their generous donation as well. And then, one of the big things, not just for the senior program, but with also centralizing our offices here at the community center. So it's a one-stop shop for everything that we want to do in this building, whether you're coming in to enroll your kid K-E through 12, or come in to register for a class, or looking for other services. We truly are a one-stop shop here, so that is wonderful. We also have some new services that we're able to provide. We have, so Bethany, our FC, Community Center social worker, is able to provide social work services to our seniors as well, which has been a huge, she has office hours as well, so that's been big. And then we've also added Aging Services Advocate from Alexandra House that specializes in elder abuse, which is, if you've been listening to NPR and the news, that's a big, it's a big topic. So we want to be able to pay attention to that for our seniors as well. And then, new events. We have a monthly senior social dining event, third Friday of the month. We have different district admin visit on a rotating schedule, and then we serve lunch as well. One of the other exciting thing about having our senior program is the collaborations that we get to do. So one of those collaborations is, we had our quilters group that meets on Fridays. We had the kids come in, our four-year-old preschool kids come in and visit, and just learn a little bit about quilting. That was a really fun event. The kids, the kids' faces light up, but you should have seen some of the seniors just being able to share their love of quilting with little four-year-olds was just a really amazing experience. And another, another thing that we do, which has been an ongoing program, is our Rockin' Nanas program. And I'll have, actually, I'll have Jody come up and share a little bit about that experience because it's a collaboration between our senior program and our Infant and Toddler Child Care program, so.
Well, I'm a rockin' nana, and it's, it's joy. It is four hours of joy a week. Walking in and having a little one-year-old come up, wrap their arms around my leg, and the smiles all light up, all these little babies, I'm in with the babies. I'm right now in the babies, so there's like a seven-month-old, a nine-month-old, a 10-month-old, and about a 14-month-old. And they're all way overdoing on their cute pills because they're all going to be arrested for being too cute on the way home. It's just adorable. It's delightful. I wish there was a way to spread the word a little more. I was just, I just grabbed a Fridley Focus before I came up here to see if we advertised for rockin' nanas in there. We do it in our little Fridley paper, but I don't know if there's a way to get the word out more. I bet you there's more grandmas out there would like to do that because they're happy with pretty minimal. You don't have to give a big commitment. I'm going Tuesdays and Thursdays from 10 to noon, and they've just gotten up from there now. If, I mean, if people even had an hour to come in, to just kind of give the workers a break while they're getting their lunch all together, and... But it's just pure joy. It really is. I, you know, it, it just makes me feel good inside, and so that's, you know, that's, and I know they feel good too because they all smile at me, and, you know, giving them a little bottle and rocking them a little bit, and then when they get to be big, oh no, they don't have a bottle anymore. I say, what? They don't have a bottle anymore? What do you need me for, you know? But yeah, there's other things, and, but just in all this one little one, they're not as much. Well, today, she scooched all the way across. I said, look, 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 there she goes. She just boom, she just got herself across the whole room, and it's the first time she did that. So this is big for us. It's a big deal for us. We're not even their parents. Get on the phone and start telling all their friends about it, I guess is what they do now, but, but it's a wonderful program. Tell your friends, your neighbors, if you know some grandmas or grandpas. I knew lots of grandpas when I was helping, I was a kind of a grandma nanny to my grandkids, and I knew a lot of my friends that were taking care of their grandkids one or two days a week. So women and men both, and so that's what I would like to see is more people hear about it, because I do think more people would come to volunteer if we had, but I'm not sure what, what, where to spread the word. You know, if they're Fridley-focused. Oh, well, they won't let me take pictures, and I said, oh. I'm not allowed to take pictures of them, but, because yeah, I'd be snapping pictures all the time. They are, they're just absolutely adorable. And then I see like the one that did go up, Kwan went up into the next room, and earlier, I'd only been there about a month when the first little boy went up, but he remembered me, and when they walked down the hallway to their thing, they're kind of going on. And they wave, and it's just so cute, and some of the staff, if they step up to say hi, they say, oh, they kind of are getting the kids in trouble. They think, okay, I'm not supposed to say... they kind of are getting the kids in trouble." They figure, okay, I'm not supposed to step out and get them out of their little line they're all walking in, nice line. And so the staff has to be careful to kind of try to ignore them a little bit when they're, with their other teacher going, going on their missions, but when you talk about going up through the, the system, that's what, I mean, I can just envision little, this little seven-month-old guy, you know, and pretty soon, you know, he'll be going into the next run, and then they go up to the, and I'm sure all the teachers just kind of, "Oh, there's a goal," you know. The next little step in life is what it is, but, so it's a, it's a wonderful experience, it's very uplifting, and, you know, you just couldn't do a better thing with your time. So I highly recommend it if any of you have parents, grandmas, aunts, uncles, anybody who wants to hold a baby, tell them to come on over.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. The joy is oozing off of you.
I know, you make me want to come.
So, and that's, that's a good note that she brings up, how can we get the word out? Actually, the Communications Department, Giles and I are working together. We're going to be doing a quarterly senior newsletter that actually gets mailed out to the entire district on a quarterly basis. So it's, it's going to be specifically for seniors, but it's going to be, everybody in the community is going to see it, so we're going to be able to get some word out that way. So that, we're excited to start that up this fall, actually, so, quarterly. So as you see here, I just wanted to highlight something here for you. New staff programs and building updates. So if you look at that list, look at all the people that we've either, it's not all ads, but it's a lot of new faces in the building. So Bethany is our new social worker. Karen Beckstrand was a former teacher at Haze that is doing amazing works for us, youth services and PYIP coordinator. And then we have a health aide in this building for the first time, because really, a lot of what you see here, the supports that we've built in here, is because we have over 450 to upwards of 500 people coming in and out of this building on a daily basis. So we really do function a lot like a, an elementary school on a daily basis, so we wanted to make sure the support that we have in these spaces matches who we're seeing in, in the buildings. So that's kind of a look at that. And then, new programs, like I said, senior program and then Tiger Club Wraparound Care, and then the building updates, which I addressed a little earlier. And then, just, so having a social worker at a community center looks a lot different than a social worker at other buildings. So I asked Bethany to just share a little bit about what that experience is like for her. So as you can see, I'm not going to read the slides to you, but you can see that she just does a lot of connecting across the spectrum. So she could have a, a five-month-old parent in her office, up to a senior, talking about like, what are my next step for resources and things like that. So it's really cool to be able to just engage in the community in a cross-spectrum base, so. Some highlights, so Fridley Community Theater, we have our big summer productions. We're doing You're in Town, which I can't believe this, is our 23rd production since we began in 2010, so we're really excited about that. And then, we also have our youth production that's, is a little bit earlier. It's the most epic birthday party ever, and we have 40 youth that attend that as well. And then, highlight, Family Movie Night. This is a big event for us. We have over, average about 125, but on our big nights, 200 to 250, so this is a big engagement piece for us as well. And then, just a quick highlight of our, some of our other programs, adult, cooking is big for us this year. We had a teacher that retired and has come back, and he's selling out all of his classes. Youth services, having Karen, who is a former teacher, is really big for us, because she really just gets youth services. So that's a really big add for us. And then, facilities continues to do really well. We have upwards of six long-term rentals that come back year over year, so that's, it's, it's big for us, so. And, I think that's it. If you have any questions, please let me know. I have, yeah, so that's community ed and Fridley Community Center for you.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said that you have no problem filling all of your slots. Do you have a waiting list, and how does that work?
Yes. So in our childcare program, like in specifically to that, we do have a, they register through our online LEO registration system, and then we, we're in communication, we ask that they communicate to the program lead in each area, and then we kind of can let them know kind of where they're at, if, if it's feasible. The biggest is our school age care. We often, we can staff, we can only have enough kids that we can staff for, so we have a 15-to-1 ratio in there. So we, we just work closely with parents and just make sure we're in constant communication as far as how our waiting list is going. Good question. Any other questions, Ellen?
I don't, I don't have a, a question. I'm just, I'm really excited about the continuity of care and being able, it was a several-year process, but getting all of that, those programs into one building, as we think about how important relationships are, and at every age, but when you look at that really young age where they're scared of new people, to see people they know in the halls as they transition through that, it's just, it's, it's really a gift, so.
It's so exciting for us, because it's not only the continuity, but it's the level of supports that we have built in as well, and those staff have been working so well together. It's just really exciting to see.
Well, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you so much.
Giles, would you come up, please, and share your volunteer appreciation video with us?
Thank you. I know after all the cuteness, it's kind of easy to forget. Vice Chair Delvo, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Heil, thank you for giving me this opportunity to just share something very brief, but it's a token of our appreciation for our volunteers. For the past eight years, we have been honoring our volunteers with an appreciation breakfast, and usually that happens in May. So for 2019, this was held last week. We typically, typically get about anywhere from 95 to 150 nominations from our schools. So our schools look at the list of volunteers who come to their buildings every day. These are repeat offenders, if you will. For the last eight years, we've been seeing the same names over and over and over again. So there is a connection there, there are relationships that are being built with our schools and our teachers and our staff, and especially our students, that brings them back time and time again. And it's always such a joy to be able to see that. And we hear of things that people do, we hear of the donations that they give, their time and their resources that they give to our students. It's always good to see their faces. It's always good to see that the district acknowledges that. So the schools do their own volunteer appreciation differently throughout the school year. The annual appreciation breakfast is just an opportunity for the district to also say their thank you, and express their gratitude to the men and women who usually are parents, community members, their grandpas. And Stephen, next year, we'll be connecting with you to make sure the Rockin' Papas and Nanas are also included. So this short video is just something that we produce annually for them. In the past, we've been doing this for about three years. We've focused on principals and school administrators expressing their gratitude. We've had teachers talk about what this means in their buildings and in their classrooms, and the impacts that the volunteers have for student learning. And this year, we also just had a combination of different people and our volunteers talking about the experiences.
Throughout its history, Fridley Public Schools has been abundantly supported by its surrounding community. One of the greatest impacts on the district is that of our wonderful volunteers. Over the years, volunteers have provided financial resources for backpacks, winter clothing, programs that support curriculum, and much-needed school supplies.
I know how expensive school supplies can be, and I know how important it is for your first day to start out with a good foot.
Our volunteers help with field trips, after-school programs, activities, and athletics.
Just the absolute joy that the students had and the coaches had, and to be able to be part of that, and to record it through photography.
You've shown our students and families that you care.
I hope that somehow, our quirky little congregation with people who are scientists, and people who are artists, and people who are just mushy hearts like me, can all come and be a part of the school in a way that will matter in students' lives.
Fridley's students have benefited from your time and guidance.
Sometimes kids think that they're stuck, that they can't go any further, and I'm here to say, "You can."
You've mentored tomorrow's leaders to show them that they can achieve what they dream.
I think the first year, we did the teeter-totter marathon in my house. We went for 125 hours. We had 92 kids coming and going, and including some policemen that sat on the teeter-totter.
Setting an example for what community is.
To see kids perform and go on, you know, they're going to top universities, no matter what. They're going to succeed, and that makes us very happy.
And our volunteers have done it all with love and compassion.
We were here, and we were helping out in Mrs. Charles' room, and then they all came running to us and gave us a big hug.
Thank you to all of the Fridley Public Schools volunteers who have so generously given their time, expertise, and compassion. You are helping to shape our future.
Thank you, that was very nice to see, very heartwarming. It's a very heartwarming meeting. Alright, we will move on to our business action items. Even these are heartwarming. Our first resolution is accepting gifts to the district. So, we do a resolution by our school board policy and by state statute, therefore, be it resolved that the school board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district. The following persons donated to the Fridley Middle School Band Program, Shirley Hawkins, a clarinet. The following persons donated to Haze Elementary for a total of $250. The Fridley Lions Club for the end-of-year carnival. And the following persons donated to Stevenson Elementary for a total of $500. Patrick McCoy through a Medtronic volunteer grant. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Adam. So we would like to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. And this is a resolution, so clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Resolution passed. Our next resolution is a, I hate to say the word out loud, is a snow day resolution. This is a resolution for the school calendar adjustment for the 2018-19 school year, based on the number of snow days that we had this year. The Minnesota State Legislature enacted laws as a result of the number of snow days that impacted schools across the state, which permits Minnesota school districts and charter schools to count these dates as instructional days, for the purpose of calculating the number of hours and days in the school year pursuant to Minnesota law. The days that they get to count were due to health and safety concerns, due to cold and snow, whereas the district wishes to count the dates identified above for the purposes set forth in the laws of Minnesota Chapter, of Minnesota 2018, Chapter 5. The canceled days, the canceled instructional days of April 11th will be counted in the calculation on the number of hours and days in the school year and the calculation of the average daily membership for the 2018-19 school year. And for those of you, the average daily membership is the ADM, which is the number of days that we receive funding for the students being in school. So this allows districts not to be sort of penalized for the weather when it wasn't safe for us to have our children out there. So this may be the first time that has happened in the state, that we've actually had it come from the legislature. So with that, do I have a motion to adapt our, our school calendar based on the, the dates in the resolution I just read?
I move a motion to accept the school calendar adjustments.
Second.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Stark. All those in favor, I'm sorry, clerk, call the roll, please. This is a resolution.
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
Resolution passed. I would like to invite Amina Oftedal up to the microphone to do second reading and adoption of policies.
Board Vice Chair Delvo, board members, Superintendent Heil, I am presenting to you for its second reading, the Internet Acceptable Use Policy. There were no changes from the first reading, just to recognize that we have divided the policy into policy and some specific procedures related to social media.
Alright. Any questions? Okay, thank you. And Dr. Heil, there are a few additional policies.
Thank you. This evening, I am requesting for the motion for the board to adopt these policies, for Policy 806, Crisis Management 807, Health and Safety Policy, and Procedure 807P. There has been no changes to these policies since the first reading.
Alright, thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that regularly appear on the board. They're standard items that are routinely on the board agenda for approval. The April 16th work session minutes and business meeting minutes of the school board, the treasurer's report, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, and retirements, the student-parent handbook for the 2019-20 school year, insurance for married spouses memorandum of understanding, bus stop approval for the 2019-20 school year, and the four-way stops approval, and then the Fridley High School band trip to Nashville, Tennessee, which will take place in March of 2020. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Written information, this, I will turn over to Dr. Heil for student enrollment.
Before I do that, though, Vice Chair Delvo, we do need to have a motion on the adoption of the policies this evening.
Oh, thank you, I missed that. I might need stronger glasses. Let's back up just a moment, or maybe I should put them on my eyes. So the, we had the second reading and adoption of policies. We had those reviewed by Ms. Oftedal and Dr. Heil, and do I have a motion to accept those policies with no changes?
Motion moved.
Second.
Moved by Adam, seconded by Thornton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Alright, thank you, Vice Chair Delvo. I am just going to share student enrollment information for today. Since last month, we have saw, seen a small increase of about eight students in the district, but overall, since the first week of March, we have seen an increase of about 77 students to our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I need to move up here. And, Amina, first readings for some additional policies.
I present to you the, the first reading of Policy 616, District, School District Systems Accountability. This policy governs all of our systems accountability and program evaluation for academic programming. It has been updated to reflect the removal of the No Child Left Behind reference, and instead has been replaced with the general reference of federal law in order to keep us compliant with whatever federal laws are in place. I submit it for your review as a first reading.
So as a, just a clarifying question, we're just giving it a general title because they changed the name of the federal law?
They do change the
Frequently.
The name of the ESEA legislation The name of the ESEA legislation with every renewal.
Thank you. All right. Now we are on to reports from school board members, just as a matter of information for the public. The school board divides up responsibilities for other committees that we represent the district on in the greater community. And so these reports are from various school board members who report out on the committees that they're representing Fridley, the, the district of Fridley in. So I'm first up. I also represent the, the district, I keep saying city, the district of Fridley on the 916 board. We are a member of the 916 district, and this is our special education district. And not a lot of updates from our last meeting. We did our, you know, it's the time of year where we do the adjusted budget and approve that and, and start to look at the budget for next year. So we did some preliminary work on that and reviewed the numbers. Currently, all of our students are, do have a space there. We had, we were on waiting lists for a while, but we've been able to get everyone in now, so that's really good news. And they are also offering some trainings that are available to our staff because we are a member district. So they have an equity in education training coming up this summer, as well as a training around a new onboarding system for staff, an electronic system. So we continue to see benefits from our membership in the district and the, the resources that are available to our staff as well as our students and families. Next, Dr. Heil, the Association of Metropolitan School Districts.
Thank you. Our guest speaker at AMSD was Commissioner Mary Catherine Rickard from the Minnesota Department of Education. And basically, she wanted to share that she had heard, this was back on May 3rd, districts' concern around cross-subsidy with special education and pre-K funding. So we were able to get information out today that we were able to lease flat lines, stabilize cross-subsidy special education, and we did receive our pre-K funding. So we're very, districts are very lucky for that. As well as she wanted to acknowledge, the graduation rate came out for last year, and she wanted to acknowledge the hard work of what was occurring in a district. So she was saying, no one gives up on our kids, that the federal guidelines, we have to look at the four-year graduation rate, but we also have high five-year and six-year graduation rate where we're not giving up on students, but admitting them reach that goal of graduation. Another interesting area that the MDE was going to be working on was looking at how do we go about recruiting new teachers into programs and looking at how can we help create a positive image of teaching because at times, there can be a negative image of being a teacher these days. So she was just mentioning, looking at the pipeline, how do we get teachers into the field of teaching? And also to be aware that what we teach in is now compared to how we were taught. So how we're teaching in school today, she stated, still resembles of how we were taught in the 60s and how it's important for us to change our experiences for that. She also wanted to look at the department in developing teacher careers. So how do we become more blended? How do we give teachers more leadership experiences? So looking more deeply into what is the life cycle of a career teacher looks like. So that was the main point of our meeting that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Some good news coming out of there. I'd also like to thank Representative Connie Bernardi and Senator Carolyn Lane, who represent Fridley District, is in the districts they represent, and they worked very hard for education at the state capitol this year, and really appreciate that they are committed to our schools and have been representing us while there.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Last on the agenda, important future school board dates. May is always a very busy month in school districts. So the Schools for Equity in Education meeting will be held May 23rd at 9:00 a.m. at the Ramada Plaza, Minneapolis. And the ALC graduation celebration will be May 23rd at 5:15 p.m. at, here at the Fridley Community Center. The AMSD board meeting is May 24th at 7:00 a.m. at Cora Education Center. Fridley High School graduation is May 30th at 7:00 p.m. at the Roy Wilkins Auditorium. The Northeast Metro 916 board meeting is June 5th at 6:00 p.m. at the Bel Air School in White Bear Lake. The Northwest Suburban Integration School District Meeting, Joint Powers Board Meeting is June 13th at 6:15 p.m. at the Northwest Integration School District Office. And the Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting is June 18th here at the Fridley Community Center. The work session is at 5:30, the open forum is at 7:00, and the business meeting is at 7:30. With that, if there are no other comments, we are ready for adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. Meeting adjourned at 8:26.